Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And introductions, why don't we start with our student reps?
Yara Fornier, student rep.
Olivia Ross, student rep.
Adam Hanson, business manager.
Michelle McClellan, assistant superintendent.
Alfreda Fornier, city councillor representing the mayor.
Jan Poyson, Ward five.
Brad Garder, at large.
Katie Gronin, superintendent.
Tom Kendall, Ward three.
Bonnie Hayes, Ward two.
Faith Montane, at large.
Bob Minnealy, Ward one.
Communications, has anyone got comments that they would like to share with the committee? And I know Pat does, so Pat, you're on.
Hello. I would like to respond a little bit about the heating issue at Edward Little that was referenced in the paper the other day. Most of you know I worked there for 25 years. The situation has not changed, it's been that way over and over. We started in 2002 going public with the information about the conditions of the building and we were finally, in 2016, awarded monies for a new building. So I would like to assure the public that their concerns have been considered. We're doing the best we can with a building whose systems are gone. They're basically gone regardless of whether we have a new boiler, the two new boilers or not. So I would like to encourage people who are concerned about these kinds of things to step up, to join the school committee, the building committee, and come and participate in the public parts of the moving forward with the new building. We're going into a very serious time when the community has their input. There'll be a straw poll and in June, there's going to be a referendum and we're going to need all the help we can get to get these kids a new school. It's going to depend on the people in the city of Auburn. And so if you've got energy out there and you really are concerned about these kinds of things, we'd really appreciate your coming, joining the committees, and helping us get that best school for our kids that we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else? Chair, alright, moving along. The consent agenda for this evening, which is the approval of this agenda and the approval of our minutes of our January 2nd meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, thank you, all those in favor? Moving us along. Public participation, do we have someone in the public that would like to share their comments with us? Anything? And I'm not seeing anyone flying out of their seats unless Brian wants to add something right off here.
I thought there was some girl up here.
No, she's Erin.
That's Hannah. And she is, she is here tonight studying for her science exam tomorrow. You can do it, Hannah.
Getting expert guidance from a parent, I believe.
Right, exactly.
If I'm not mistaken there.
I saw Hannah this afternoon in the Edward Hill High School library. She was studying a while, so.
Boy, it must be a big test, Hannah.
Alright.
For Hannah.
So let's move on to student information. Karen, Olivia, do we have something to share?
Pull the mic right up to you.
Yeah, pull the mic right up so.
I know, it's.
Okay, so me and Olivia, we emailed the, all the schools.
Bring it closer still.
Yeah, bring it closer so you broadcast right out here.
We heard back from AMS, Fairview, East Auburn, and Walton. And we have a couple of things to show too at the end. But AMS, Apple came in this week and worked with the seventh grade students for an entire day to enhance their knowledge of educational applications using their laptops. Team Achieve has been busy training for the upcoming Special Olympics and were most recently practicing their snow shoeing. AMS Winter Sports teams are doing well and CLC is very active after school. And prior to the December break, the Student Council hosted a School Spirit Week. And then, for Fairview, and this is like for this month too, so Fairview students and staff participated in the LA Holiday Parade. And then the Fairview Chorus students sang holiday songs and several students and staff helped share holiday career, or cheer with parade participants. And then Fairview Chorus singing the National Anthem at the Edwardville Basketball Game against Lewiston High School, that was a little while ago. And the principal said it was exciting to see the parents, or the presence of students singing in the front of many alumni athletes, fans, and families. And then Fairview students also celebrated the holidays through community building activities like building gingerbread houses, inviting guests, readers, and to share favorite stories. And then Fairview third and fourth grade students had the opportunity to extend their studies of earth science by visiting a planetarium right in our school gym. And then also MICA karate sensei instructors came and worked with students as part of their PE classes. And they worked on ABCs of karate, attitude, behaviors, and consequences. Moves were incorporated for each letter. It was about promoting a healthy lifestyle and making good choices. And one student was also awarded a year membership for karate classes at MICA. And then at East Auburn, fifth graders recently visited Central Maine Community College and I have some pictures to show after. Students learned about the exciting programs that CMCC has to offer, including criminal justice, precision machining, and nursing, building, construction, technology, and to name a few. Students were impressed with program offerings and campus facilities. And then the principal said thanks to CMCC staff for a great tour. Holiday crafts for the veterans were, they also did at East Auburn. And it held its annual craft for Veterans Day in December. Students enjoyed making cards and ornaments for Maine veterans. This was a wonderful way for students to celebrate the season by doing something thoughtful for others. And students also had fun decorating, eating holiday sugar cookies. And then currently Walton is participating in the Week Two of the Winter Kids, Winter Games Challenge. And last week was physical activity. This week focuses on nutrition. Next week is Parent Engagement Week with a final of a winter carnival on Week Four. And then I'll have a video of that. I just don't know how to put that up there.
Anya? And Walton is, Mike Davis told us they're tied for third place right now with some other schools, so they're hoping to move up.
Yep.
It's all, yeah, it's in my email.
Is that Juju in here tonight?
Yeah. Sorry.
Got to have it though.
Yes.
Not stagged. Yeah. That must be, yes. That's the twin, the.
Freedom Tower?
That was amazing. You still think about that? That's incredible.
Is that the Jarvis Center on the left, very left?
That's Times Square lighting up, right?
We're almost there, folks.
Olivia, are you, are you playing hockey? How's that going?
It's fun. We're doing really good.
Yeah, very well, yeah. You heading to the St. Don's game tonight?
Tonight. Varsity's playing St. Don's tonight, yeah.
Are you varsity?
No.
Yes, she's, it's a Hornets, yes. Well, since we're waiting, Olivia, what position do you play?
Forward.
Play forward.
I can't, this is only my second year, so I can't skate backwards like defense can.
So you only can go forward?
I can skate backwards a little bit, but I'm not the best at it.
Have you scored?
No.
Have you assisted?
No.
Have you been in the penalty box?
No.
Well, that's a good thing.
I wanted to this year.
You wanted to be in the penalty box, that's a goal. Okay, well, there you go.
Alright, here we go.
That'd be fun.
Uh-oh, if we don't get sound again. Alright, here we go.
Hi, we're from Walton Elementary School in Auburn, from Andrusgoggin County. We are going for the gold in the Winter Kids 2019 game. Let the games begin!
Awesome.
Very good.
And they get $5,000, is it?
They come in number one?
Number one?
Park Avenue come in number one last year?
No. I don't know what place they came in, though. It's tough competition.
It was, and they were, they changed right near the end, so I'm afraid to say.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
How did they decide who, which school does it?
They have to apply and then they choose certain schools in Andrusgoggin County. Each county gets representation. So there are two schools right now in Andrusgoggin County.
So do all of our schools apply every year?
I don't think all of them have applied. I think some, I don't know for sure who applied this year.
So we should encourage them all to apply. $5,000 is $5,000.
Something to talk about at the Wellness Committee.
Exactly.
And they get to keep the money.
These are like the pictures from the students visiting CMCC and learning stuff.
This is their tour.
And they went to CMCC.
Yeah. That was one of the pictures. And then this was them doing their crafts. Hmm, I believe that's it. And then next Monday, or no, this upcoming Monday, I've lost track of the days. EL is doing the midnight marathon where there's going to be the girls' basketball game and then a pep rally right after. And from there, there's going to be, or there's going to be games at the pep rally, I believe. Like, like some shooting games, like basketball related stuff. And then from there, there's going to be skating at the roller jam and all you can eat Domino's pizza. And then like games at the roller jam as well.
What date is that?
The 21st, Monday, yeah.
Monday.
And they're, they're ending it at 10:00, 10:00 PM instead of midnight because we're no longer doing workshop day, we're doing a student day.
Yeah.
And some of the seniors have been laughingly saying, maybe we'll make it Senior Skip Day. So we'll see what happens, but they've already showed their hands, so now we know what they're up to.
Yeah, we weren't.
Yeah, it wouldn't be you all, no.
No, 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 no.
You'll be in school.
Have you girls gotten all your applications in?
Yeah, for the most part, yeah.
For the most part? Have you heard anything back?
Yeah, I've just heard back from the state schools that I applied to. I just applied to like UNH and UVM and UMaine, but I'm just waiting to hear about the bigger ones, or the more competitive ones.
And what about you?
I applied to, most of my schools were in Massachusetts. And I've heard back from All But One, which was kind of a reach anyway. That was my reach school, Northeastern, I haven't heard from them. But I got into like LaSalle and Dean and Suffolk and Curie, I think, there. And then also Providence College in Rhode Island, which. And I think I'm going to apply to a couple in Virginia because my aunt will be stationed out there during my college time, so.
Good. Good luck to you girls.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Katie, can I ask Katie a question? Katie?
I know that you had a very interesting conversation at the strategic meeting. And I was thinking that people don't realize that our students go to significant colleges and colleges. And it would be very nice to have, as much as you could do, a roster.
Oh yeah, we have that.
So that it can go, we don't need names of kids, but just a roster of the colleges that the kids have been accepted at, so that we can say to people, oh, they got into Harvard. Or they got into UNH, or Providence.
That's a very good idea.
Isn't it on the graduation thing?
Yeah, I, we put that out at the end of the year. You know, in our, I think I put it in the city newsletter. I put it in our budget flyers, a sampling of where our students have gone. But we can get the whole list of where they accepted to, definitely.
I think it would be a good thing considering the conversation that was had. And those.
People make assumptions and we need to break those, yeah.
Right, exactly.
That's something we could run on EL's website and so forth, yeah.
Oh, that's a good thing, too.
They put it, they put it up in the hallway on there.
Yeah, in the hallway, you can go and see where they're.
So, too bad, yeah, she'll be able to translate it to.
Oh yeah, they keep track. Their guidance keeps track of it, yeah. Yep, those are great suggestions.
Very good. Moving on to Superintendent's Report, Planning and Development, I believe. We have a special guest this evening.
Yes, we do have a special guest. So Erin Towns is with us and she's going to tell us about her, and I won't pronounce it right.
Grosvenor.
Grosvenor, yeah. Teacher Fellows, Erin has been with us before when she shared her adventures. She is one of those lifelong learners. You can follow her on Instagram and see things that she's been doing on her travels, in her classroom. She's always looking for ways to connect outside experiences with student learning. She recently had an alumni who did, who was a teacher at EL, who had been in Morocco, Spain.
He was in Morocco in the Peace Corps.
Morocco, yeah.
John Delorme.
Yeah, so he came and speaks. So she's always thinking outside the box and she'll tell, she did a lot with GIS, with the city's work. So we always appreciate, she's a bright spot in our district and so I think it's great to have her here to tell you what she did this summer.
Great. Thank you so much for inviting me to come speak to you guys tonight. I really appreciate it. I've got some remarks prepared because in trying to describe the magnitude of this professional development has been quite hard. So if you would just please humor me as I read some prepared remarks about it. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Erin Towns. I've been working at Edward Little High School. This is my 20th year of teaching there. Can't believe I'm that old. And I'm here tonight to share the tremendous experience that was awarded to me by Lindblad Expeditions and National Geographic. And to these organizations, I am forever grateful. So being awarded the 2018 National Geographic Grosvenor Teacher Fellowship happened through a competitive application process that chose 40 outstanding educators from across the United States and Canada. The program is a professional development opportunity. It is not a trip. And its aim is to increase and refine educators' skills in the area of geography, culture, photography, and digital technology. So I was able to travel on expedition aboard the National Geographic Sea Lion with 65 other individuals, including photographers, scientists, naturalists, videographers, cultural interpreters, and my partner, whose name was Jessica Dorcas. She's an environmental educator from North Carolina and she teaches middle school. The expedition itself took me to southeast Alaska and British Columbia. We boarded, or embarked from Sitka, Alaska, and our trip ended us in Seattle, Washington. The expedition included daily excursions to examine geography, environment, and First Nations and Native American culture. The first part of the professional development program was an in-depth and up-close study of the environment and impact of human activity. Most notable to me was the impact of fish farms and Atlantic salmon populations on Alaska's environment and economy, something very relatable to the state of Maine, whose increasing numbers of fish farms continues to be beneficial in some ways and detrimental in others. I also learned that glaciers are melting and retreating faster in Alaska than anywhere. There are over 100,000 glaciers in Alaska. The size alone and the magnitude of the state is absolutely incredible. The study also, for the first time, gave me a first-class environmental education as a social studies educator. This helps me provide my students with more accurate information, education, and explanations about historical, political, economic, and social issues. A simple activity that was created out of the experience is an assignment that asks students to compare warming temperatures in Alaska with the warming temperatures in the Gulf of Maine, one of the fastest bodies of warming water in the world currently. This activity will be used in combination with data analysis to create recommendations for future solutions to be used in Maine to address climate and economic issues. The next half of the program was dedicated to studying culture and sustainability with the Klingut, Haida, and Kwakwakiwak peoples of Canada and the American Northwest. We were lucky enough to meet and work with local chiefs, artisans, tour guides, cultural interpreters, and preservation experts. One thing that I took back to my classroom was a perspective related to nature. Under many Native American and First Nations constitutions, all plants, animals, and humans are afforded full political rights and protection. Perspectives brought back and discussed within the context of Maine helps my students understand perspective and worldviews of Maine's Wabanaki nations, something that is mandated by state law to be taught in all Maine classrooms. Using a wider variety of research can enable my students to more accurately analyze issues and problems related to Wabanaki land and water rights, the breakdown of political relationships between indigenous communities in the state, and help them to better understand ongoing debates regarding high school mascots right here in their own state. Wider perspectives result in increased empathy, respect, and understanding. If you have these, you will have better collaborations to get things done at the local, state, national, and international level. My favorite part of the expedition was a visit to the Haida traditional homeland of Haida Gauai and the ancient burial grounds at Skagway. First Nations people in British Columbia have lived there for over 13,000 years. This culture was almost completely wiped out in the late 1800s and the islands were renamed Queen Charlotte Islands and the Haida lost rights to sacred land. It has been a long road of return. In 2009, British Columbia officially renamed the islands as part of an historic reconciliation agreement between the Haida Nation and the provincial government of British Columbia. Relating this to my students in Maine, I acquired ideas about preservation and use of culture and traditional art to model how the Haida Nation collaborated as community members to demand rightful return of land and achieve success. 360 imagery of sacred totems, burial grounds, and ceremonies were brought back to emphasize the importance of history and memory. Classroom engagement is definitely one of the more popular aspects for my students. It enables them to see what I was seeing on the ground like they were standing right next to me. National Geographic was solely responsible for introducing me to this technology and fully training me to use it. This right here is a 360 camera. It creates 360 images and video that enables students to explore the world. It opens eyes to possibilities. We use Google Expeditions and Google Street View apps and 360 image viewers to check out places and examine geographic characteristics that help to define world political, social, economic, and religious systems. This video and imagery allows students to see the world in different ways, expanding perspectives and allowing them to question what they see. Inquiry is at the heart of a good social studies education. I want questioning students. Here I have a 360 image that I took while I was there. It is in a cardboard, a Google Cardboard Viewer. You can look through the viewer and move your head around to see the image. All the way around you, up, down, everywhere. I will warn you, I'm going to pass this around for you to try. I will warn you to please stay seated and move slowly. Sometimes this can mess with depth perception. Students are offered the option of viewing all 360 imagery with a finger on a screen instead of, instead of, instead, if the viewer itself is bothersome to them. They are always asked to sit when doing this to avoid injury. What we also have here while you're waiting for your turn is a video that I took using it. It can be manipulated from a number of different viewpoints and helps students to see the world in different ways. Students have even started to brainstorm perspective 360 shots themselves. It is cool to see them excited, exploring their world, and creating. So the students actually came up with the different, you know, like where they wanted to be outside to test it out and how they were going to set themselves up. up and what they were gonna use, uh, that was inside the physical geography, you know, that surrounded them. Larger ways that this professional development has impacted my teaching and classroom includes two primary examples. Action Now, a United Nations Sustainable Development, uh, course is an offering for students who are interested in learning about the world's most pressing contemporary issues. This is the third year that I've taught the class. Students work throughout the semester on a capstone project that is a solutions-based and action-oriented one addressing, um, at least one contemporary issue. They present what they learn to community leaders, they make recommendations to lawmakers in Augusta, or they share knowledge with an authentic audience using documentary field studies, photography, and three sixty virtual reality images. The professional development increased my geographic content knowledge to address more fully and more accurately underlying causes of the issues that I teach about. It has provided another lens that students can use to learn about the world. The second way that this has really impacted is, um, because I've done a number of State Department programs and Fulbright programs, um, I have other opportunities that cross my desk. Last April, I was invited to be a panelist and a participant in a US State Department seminar dedicated to taking collective action to learn about and tackle addiction, uh, issues in communities. Our students are the product of a generation of community members who struggle with addiction to opiates. Maine is among the top ten states with the highest rates of opiate-related overdose deaths. Last year in Auburn, there were thirty-seven overdoses resulting in the loss of five community members. While those numbers do not sound like a lot to some folks, keep in mind that these are just reported and documented overdoses. This in no way represents the actual number of opiate-dependent community members. I'm interested in starting a program that helps struggling students with active addiction or addicted family members to connect directly with nature using geographic exploration, experiential learning, and physical education to introduce them to alternative options for stress management and effective coping strategies. I'm using what I learned on this fellowship, uh, to work with a former Auburn graduate who is trying to do the same thing in Portland, Maine. We are engaging the governor's office to seek more information about grants and possible funding sources. In closing, I would like to take a moment to thank my principal, Scott Aneer, Superintendent, Katie Grandin, who have consistently through the years supported the work that I do. Teacher professional development is a vital component of what we do to bring the best quality education to our students. Thank you so much for the time to speak with you tonight.
Erin, thank you for sharing.
Uh, that is the Johns Hopkins Glacier at Glacier Bay National Park.
Those are your photos?
These are all my photos. So, uh, you know, when we went down, there was a, uh, pre-expedition workshop. The National Geographic flew us all down. Um, we got to go to National Geographic headquarters. Uh, we worked with people about things like public presentations, how to take a good photograph, how to take, you know, uh, quality video, uh, tips and tricks that we could teach our students in order to bring documentary film, uh, into the classroom in more engaging and useful ways.
Erin, yeah, I'm gonna want you to teach Mark and Lisa how to use those three, you know, three sixty goggles so that they can produce something on the design of the new high school, just.
Yeah, absolutely. We can put our students right on it. They're ready to go.
Erin, can you, uh, I know at, um, the high school, you're leading a professional learning group about project-based learning.
Yes.
Do you wanna talk about what you've been doing with your colleagues, um, around your learning team?
Yeah, it started with PBL, but, um, all good project-based learning, uh, requires a central essential question. You know, like I said before, inquiry is the heart of social studies education, certainly in most education. And, you know, we really want, um, you know, to design questions that are relevant, that hook kids, uh, that provide a buy-in for them. And so my team members and I have been working really hard together in order to, you know, design these questions. It started more as a broad overview of, of, uh, project-based learning, but we quickly found out that we wanted to zoom in and really work very hard on doing that. And some of the questions that have come out of that study have been, um, really, really great. Okay, yes.
I just wanna thank you 'cause for those that don't know, she's amazing and she's, you're truly a light in the high school and you have such a huge impact on the students, on so many, I think, more than you'll ever know. And so thank you for being that light 'cause you really have a great connection and you, you get them and you speak to them and they hear it. And I think a lot of them play that out in their lives. So, thank you. 'Cause I know you spend a lot of your own time doing a lot of things and I just have to figure out how I can go on a trip with you.
Oh, well, I, I, I really thank you. That means the world to me. Um, but we have a whole entire staff that is full of gems that are doing.
We do.
Absolutely incredible work, you know, and I'm one, uh, one of many of them that are up there. Um, just, just an incredible group of people, so, uh, they're my family. Those are my people.
Well, you're representing them well tonight.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right. Next, we have a update on our project. It's before the community and the school committee and the building committee. I think if we invite Mark and Lisa from Harriman Associates up to the table, we will bring an update on where we are with this project to the school committee. There's been, uh, ongoing meetings with, uh, subcommittees and the building committee, as all of you are aware. And if those that wish to tune in to, uh, Great Falls TV, they've been able to watch some of those meetings. We had one last night, yes. It was right, last night, right?
It was last night.
It was last night. My timeframe is skipping here.
It was very exciting last night, Tom.
Yeah, it was a good meeting last night, uh, with a lot of good information and a, and a new view of where we're headed, uh, with the new EL. So I believe we're gonna have, uh, an opportunity for the public to see that again this evening. Uh, and we'll share some comments and the direction that, uh, we believe the community is supportive of after going through public forums and getting community feedback. Uh, we've got a forum again next Wednesday evening, uh, that we will be looking for more community, uh, input and review of the progress that we as a building committee have done and completed at this point and then the direction that we feel that, uh, we're leading the community, uh, in the design and the implementation of, uh, a new education, uh, facility for our high school students, so.
What time is the forum, Tom?
Forum is at six at EL.
Thank you.
So I, Mark and Lisa are here knowing that you're all gonna be there next Wednesday to hear more, so they're not gonna go real deep in the information because it's gonna be repeat next week. This is kinda giving you a heads up. Here's the design, here's where we are in the project, some, um, some of the local costs that are being considered that are gonna be out next Wednesday, our timeline. You know, I, I've said this, uh, number of times, this is an aggressive timeline. Harriman is working at a hundred and ten percent to get us to June referendum and then there's some things that may, um, hold that up, but we're, they're gonna talk a little bit more about that. So if they feel like they're moving and you wanna slow them down, that's fine, or ask questions, but I told them, you know, la- at the building committee, this took two hours. Bob, I didn't think you'd be up for two hours tonight. No. So, uh.
Is there a game?
No, but he, you know, we have things. And so they're gonna, they're gonna cover what they covered at the building committee and then you're gonna get more next Wednesday, but we wanted to give you the first look, you know, the look out of our building committee meeting last night, what, what has been shared. We wanna keep you in the loop.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Katie. So, uh, Lisa and I have a, an abridged version 'cause we didn't think you had two hours, uh, tonight and, uh, but we, we do, so if you wanna take the two hours, we're all set.
Lisa's got kids.
Yeah, very long, but, uh, the, the project has felt like it's been in the abstract for a long time, that we've been talking about this notion of what the school is without it really becoming real. It's now starting to become more and more real, which is pretty exciting, especially for, for us as architects to sort of manifest these ideas into now a building. Most of what we're gonna show you is in, in plan and sort of thinking about it if we were to kinda look just down on the building and how the spaces in the, in the school are organized. And so that's a lot of what we've been working on and there's a strong reason for that. That's because the, um, this size of the school really grows from the layout of all these rooms. And so making sure they have the right number of rooms, making sure the rooms are the right size, making sure that those rooms in the right location in the school is really an important part of it. So that's a lot of what you're gonna see tonight, but, uh, we'll try to give you an overall view. A lot of also what we're gonna be talking about, uh, is, is, um, progress that is dependent not only on the building committee and Harriman, but also on the Department of Education. And so they're really a, a partner in this with us, uh, mostly because they're funding a lot of it, so, but, uh, but so, so a lot of this is an iterative process. We show progress, they give us comments, we show it to the building committee, we show it to you, and we take all that, uh, into consideration as we evolve the design of the building. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Lisa here for the first part of the presentation.
Thanks, Mark. So, um, our overview of our agenda for this evening is going over, um, the option one, um, which was the courtyard plan diagram that the building committee had arrived at, uh, I think just before the holidays. Um, we'll go briefly over the programming, um, that we've done to date, the site plan updates, floor plan updates, massing updates, and that's where we start to kinda bring it up into three D. Um, and then talk about space allocation workbook, which is a very detailed Excel document we go over with the state to define what the spaces are today in the school versus what they will be in the future and who funds, um, which portions of those spaces. Um, we'll talk a little bit about the Franklin Program, um, how we arrive at the student count or population that they, they fund for square footage, and then, uh, a brief overview of local options and a schedule update. So that being said, um, the next couple of slides are slides I think you've all seen before, um, just to kind of, uh, recap on the, um, the programming work that we've done to date. This is a draft design statement. We'll continue to revisit this. Um, I think everyone can see that. I won't, I won't read it word for word, um, but this is, really captures what the, um, the leadership and the community have talked about for this school. Guiding principles and design patterns. Um, so these are the different, uh, ingredients and lens that we look at as we're designing this school, so whether it be sustainability, um, project learning, um, classroom neighborhoods, uh, visible learning, and so on and so forth of the items that are up there. These are the items that we keep looking at as we make our design decisions, uh, throughout the, the design. There were three diagrams that we reviewed with the building committee, um, and, uh, this is the courtyard scheme that we arrived at as sort of the, the, um, organizational pattern for our design. Uh, it was, uh, inspired, we all visited a school called West Bridgewater, um, and they were based on a courtyard scheme, uh, that was, um, very, um, the, I think the entire group was very impressed with the layout and the, the connection to the outdoors and the warmth of that school and the efficiency, as well as the separation between public and private, um, in that school and some great, um, twenty-first century learning opportunities throughout the school. So this is a, a massing diagram of, of that project. So this was our inspiration for option one. Um, uh, before I get to that, we'll go to the site plan. This is the site plan that everyone has, um, seen, um, to date. Um, the footprint there was sort of a placeholder, so that orange is the building footprint. Um, on here, you'll see, um, all of the athletic fields, um, except for in this, uh, site plan, the tennis courts. Uh, so since the last time you've seen the site plan, we've started to refine it even more. The, um, building footprint is on there, um, based on the current design of the building as well as the six tennis courts. You can see to the upper right-hand side, um, we are massaging, uh, whether there's drives or walks up to those, those tennis courts and, and reviewing all of that with our partners up at the Department of Education. Um, but this current plan is showing, I think, just over six hundred parking spaces right now and then all, the whole complement of athletic, uh, fields. This is the courtyard diagram that was shown to the building committee, again, before the holidays. This is level one. Um, I won't spend too much time on the diagrams 'cause we have the plans more developed and we can walk you through those. Um, but essentially, it's a three-story classroom wing, um, and a, uh, more private side to the building and more public side, which we'll go through and, and rooms for future expansion. So I'm gonna get up and kinda walk you through the floor plan. I don't know if anyone can hear me. Essentially, this is the main entry right here of the building. On this side of the, the building is more of the classroom side, the classroom wing, if you will, and this is more of the public, um, side to the building. When you come into the building, um, we've created the, the lime green areas, the career technical education, so we have them integrated within the classroom areas and then those areas that really need sort of those tall base spaces are over on this side of the school. Coming in, you have your commons area, which is, um, really the cafeteria slash large gathering area for the school, um, with all of your cooking components. So we have your traditional kitchen, we have aspirations culinary, CTE culinary, with their culinary dining, as well as, um, the, um, cosmetology up front here, so sort of trying to create this almost storefront to that public side of those program elements. And then your library, which is, uh, embedded into the courtyard, so there's great views out into the courtyard, great views from this public lobby as well as from the, the commons. And then, um, you start to enter the classroom wings. These two areas are mostly your aspirations and your CTE programs, and then you get to the classroom bar, as we call it. I think we have about seven different classrooms in this area, starting to create almost a, a neighborhood of classrooms. And then in the middle, you have a workroom, office, conference, um, some areas you have your assistant principal with breakout spaces for the students. And so there's the, the workrooms and the offices have eyes on that public area, so the students can use it as a study area, gathering area, or a breakout space from their classrooms. Um, and then on this side of the building, we have our admin for our secure entry right here. We've incorporated the bookstore, you have your elevator, and then, um, from here over, we have what we call the art bar. Um, we have our art rooms up front, um, we have our theater, so we're showing a twelve-hundred-seat theater, performing arts, a stage with a full fly, and then a complement of all of the support spaces for that behind there with storage, um, and a tech shop. And then at the back of the art bar, we have, um, band, chorus, uh, practice rooms and storage. And then this blue bar is your athletic bar. We have an auxiliary gym, um, out in the front, um, right next to what we're calling the public entry or after-hours entry. So we've created, um, air, ways to secure the building off at night so that folks can come in here and use these facilities after, after hours, whether it be a performance, the gym, or the auxiliary gym. Um, so this gym right now is shown the same size as your existing gym or, or very close to that with bleachers for the entire student body. And then we have our locker rooms and our PE classes and weight room and, uh, training and laundry in the back. And then in this final bar here, we have, um, the SOS RETC program out front here, and then we have, um, CTE programs, we have the early childhood, um, we have precision manufacturing, we have composite manufacturing, and then we have the, um, EMT and, uh, fire in the back as well. How many classrooms? How many total? Um, forty-seven, forty-eight, somewhere around there? On the second level, um, so, uh, there's the community stair that is off the commons. You can come upstairs this way. We have our, uh, what we're calling our health and guidance suite, so this is where the nurse and guidance, um, are with conference rooms. We have these CTE aspiration areas and then the classroom, um, bar is the same. It's repeated on all three floors to have as much flexibility as possible. Um, and then we have our broadcast media, which is, uh, adjacent to the theater, so there can be some synergy between those two spaces. Um, and then the rest is hallway to get to the second floor of the performing arts and then be able to exit out. And then the third floor, we have, um, the classroom bar, which is the third, the, um, only three-story space, and then these areas that are kind of blurry that were those CTE aspiration areas will be where we have future expansion, so we'll make sure that the structure can handle expansions in the future. And it's about two hundred and eighty-seven, uh, eight hundred square feet for the entire building.
So it's bigger than what we have?
It is.
But not as big as Sanford.
But not, but not as big as Sanford, right? So the, um... But not but not as big as Sanford, right. So the, one of the things that we start doing is in also in conceiving of all those spaces and rooms and how they're organized, we also want to give a sense of how are we organizing it vertically as well. This diagram was the first pass of the massing. It showed how those bars are organized and where the tall spaces are and where the lower spaces are, and how those get arranged on the site. And and just to give you, before I go to the to the massing, I'm going to actually go back a little bit to the site, just to give you, there we go, and and a sense of where the, and I think if I hit escape, oh, it's going to do, it's going to wig out on me here. Well, this is mine Avenue. You can, I don't know if you can see my cursor. It's actually, maybe I can't do that. I know what I can do. I can get up with the microphone.
There you go.
Let's try this. So just to give you an orientation of of how it's laying out on the site, this is mine Avenue right here. So there's a tall slope right here. This is that classroom, the three-story classroom bar. So you can imagine being at the upper level of that, on the third story, and looking out, and you get a great view of the river and the water. And so, pretty spectacular. And then, so as we've organized the site, so the the current building, I don't know if you can see it, but it's dashed underneath it. It's about right here. So that allows us to build the school while the existing building is being occupied. So that's really helpful in terms of thinking about how we're going to phase this and not have to replace a school, a temporary school for a thousand students. So the primary entrance is over here. Here's here's Western Ave, and then Harris is over there, and our and our loop still connects, but it gets a little more organized. And so the primary entrance of the school is is right here. These are the sort of public spaces on this side, and then this is the more private side with the classrooms on on this area right here. So this this is the really, really important elevation or front of the school that we're we're dealing with. And so as you come up, that's the one that really is is sort of important to make sure we get it right. So just to give you, again, a little bit of an orientation of how that goes. And then we have the service yard on the backside of the building, and then those career tech spaces that need loading and access on the side of the building. Yeah, and I guess, yeah, I might as well stay up here to help orientate with the massing a little bit. So the next slide shows how that front of the building looks as you come up. And this is very, very early. It's not not well-developed. It doesn't have a lot of the materials on it, but it helps us start to understand how we're breaking apart this very big 287,000-square-foot building into something that feels comfortable as you drive up and and gives you a sense of of scale as you're coming onto the pieces. So we have a bus loop on one side, and we have the parent loop on the other with parking in between all of those, much, much better organized than the current situation. So that's the, and then we have, across the front, we have some of the lower spaces in the front, and then the high volumes, the theater and the gym, we put those behind it so that we don't come up to a wall that's that's a 40-foot or 30, 30-something-foot tall wall. So we have the auxiliary gym in the front, we have the art spaces, and tucked in behind, between the art and the and the auxiliary gym is an entrance for, we call it the night entrance, and it has access to the gym and the theater spaces, as well as access to the athletic fields a little more directly than going through the front entrance. But the primary entrance is is right here, and that's where we we separate from the public side to the to the private side. So you can see the three-story volume. We only get a glimpse of it in the front, and we we step things down to a single-story or two-story across the front of the building, try to have as much transparency, have a variety of materials and heights that. So I think the analogy we used the other night was it feels almost like a village of of different volumes across the front of the building. So this is, this is the area that will get developed, but it comes in in development in sequence with with the floor plan. So as we shift and push things around in floor plan and plan, we'll start to massage these things a little bit more as well. But but that gives you a sense of of coming up to the school building and what you might see as you do that. So I think as Lisa said, we have, we've been meeting and going over the floor plan with the Department of Education, and we have a listing of all the spaces. So this is what we call our space allocation workbook, and we don't expect anyone to read those numbers. But it's about, I think we're, I don't know, about 12 pages of of spaces. So
You didn't say 12 versions.
No, yeah, well, we probably have. Right. So every time we meet with them, they say, well, that's a little too big, or that's, they very rarely say, that's too small, make it bigger.
But they do.
But but so, and and so this page just shows that, changes it. So every time we meet with them, there's constant updates to that. The big issue with that is what we're, what we are trying to match is that the state says, we will fund you 185 square feet for every student that you have in the school building. So that's that's sort of a magic formula. And then then it's up to us to try to build all the programs that we've been talking about for the last year and a half or so into that formula. And right, and that that does not include the career tech component as well. So so what what we do is we look at the enrollment figures, and we multiply it times 185 square feet per student, and that gives us the the overall. So when we said that the current building right now is 287,000 square feet, that includes the career tech and includes the larger auditorium, larger gymnasium, some of the pieces that we've been talking about incorporating into the building. So right now, we've got a building slightly larger than what the state says we will fund, and we're working hard to to get it aligned with that. But but we understand that there are some spaces that are important to us that may increase the square footage beyond what the state says we will fund. So that's, that's part of where we're at with the development of the plan right now. It's a iterative process. And so, right now, we're looking at the career tech piece has about 50,000 square feet, just a little under 48,000 square feet. So so we add that on top of the state-funded piece, and that gets us our our overall total size of the building, which theoretically should, would would come in around 250, not necessarily should, but be about 250,000 square feet. So so we know we have a delta right now.
Plus 16,000.
And so, yeah, 16,000 square feet accounts for the the auditorium and the gymnasium primarily. So what we also have been working with with the state is, in addition to all the spaces they tell us that we, that that are necessary for the, and that they will fund for the educational program, they also say, oh, by the way, we want you to put all the mechanical equipment in the building as well. And then mechanical equipment actually takes up a fair amount of space. And so I think we we put in about 12,000 square feet of mechanical space since since our, one of ours. So every time we squeeze the building and make it more efficient, then we say, okay, well, we want you to put the mechanical equipment. Okay, we squeeze that in as well. All that's driving the overall size of the building. And right now, we're we're about 198 square feet per student at the state-funded piece. So that's, that's sort of the delta between 185 and 198 right now.
About 13 square feet.
13 square feet per student, yeah. So, and this is a summary. This happened to be an aspect that we're really targeting with the state right now. This identifies, I don't know if anyone did a count of how many air handlers we have for the building, but somebody's doing a count right now. I think they are 18, 24, 25. So 30 air handling units. That's the stuff that brings all the air in, conditions it, and makes sure that students are in well-conditioned spaces and not falling asleep. So, so the enrollment figures that we've been working with, and again, why this is important, as we said, that that the state will say, okay, we'll fund 185 square feet for every student. So right now, we're working off of this enrollment study that was done, where the the highest enrollment actually is, it was identified to be approximately the 2020, 21 school year, and that would be about 1,170 students. When we anticipate opening, the school will be about 2023. And the number of students by, according to the study, at that time will be about 1,148. So the state also said that we would, we would fund the program to the students that are going to be in there. But when when we made the, or when this, the idea that Franklin would or would not come in, we looked at two models. We looked at, okay, what would be the size of the school with Franklin in it, and what would be the size of the school without Franklin in it. So if we take 50 students, which is what the the enrollment number we're considering was part of the Franklin program, we backed that out of the enrollment that 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 we're seeing as the maximum when we open, we're at 1,100. And the state has said that they're comfortable with 1,100 students, and that's what we're designing the size or capacity of the new school for. So.
We were told that Monday, just so you know.
Yeah, exactly. So
That was told to us on Monday. So that's why some adjustments on the square footage need to be made.
That's right. Prior, prior to that, I think we were using 1120. And and so so it's, okay, suddenly now the building had to get smaller, and we'll have to take spaces or size, sizes of the the library, the cafeteria, that that the state will fund based on a formula kitchen. So the other consideration that we're doing is, the state says, we will fund that for you. But as we've been talking with the community, and some people, I think, have been involved in some of the the forums that we had, the last public forum, we talked about what would the community like to see in the school that may not be funded by the state. And so that is an ongoing consideration as we develop the size of the school, as well as the potential budget for the school. And if we look at some of the extras that we're considering, including a stadium for the football with bleachers and lighting and artificial turf, concessions buildings, we look at the larger auditorium, the performing arts center, that it has a lot more than simply just the theater with 11, with 1,200 seats. It also has a tech shop and extra storage space and enhanced lighting and sound system. So it's really a state-of-the-art theater. And we look at that. We look at some of the interior items in the school. That comes up to extras at about 17,000, I mean, 17 million, rather, in 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 construction costs. But the construction costs are only about 75% of the project costs. And so we add on another 25% to those. And those extras come up to about 22 million or 21 million. And in addition to those, we're also looking at the potential or possibility of having geothermal heating and cooling, as well as a second turf field. So, and so that's, those are some of the potential extras that we're looking at right now.
The thermal, geothermal has been reduced, right?
Well, so the state has, in the past, not funded geothermal, funded 100% geothermal, and now they're telling us they'll fund half of geothermal. And so, so right now, the last information we had at the Department of Education said that they would consider funding half of it. I don't think anything was inscribed in stone yet. So, but that's what we, we, the latest conversation was. And so we think that could make a very attractive alternative, and a payback for something like that, maybe as low as four years before you recover the local investment in much higher efficiency heating and cooling system.
So that number there is the total cost of geothermal?
For that, that is the, that's the incremental, incremental change from a conventional
She's saying it's not the total price that you, we didn't reduce it by 50%.
Correct. You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Yeah, and it's a, it's an incremental cost above a conventional heating system that the state would pay for.
The school has also been the subject of several letters to the other, the last one I took a little bit personally, because I responded to the first negative one, saying this is our one opportunity in a lifetime. So let's build a school of, let's build a school that we all can be proud of. And the gentleman talked about the artificial turf field, which is only, only a, only something to be considered and not part of the design. Though that had, that field has worked very well in Norriston, and if Norriston can afford it, I'm sure we could. And I also said, as a disabled senior citizen with no children in the school system, I would be happy to pay a little extra to fund a school that we can be proud of for generations to come, and to be a source of our leaders of Auburn in the future.
Yep.
But anyone listening, this is going to come to a vote. If we do not get the majority of citizens in Auburn voting for this, it's not going to pass.
You have to remember that the mayor has said, this needs to be the best school in New England. So we're counting on the mayor to hold to our word that he wants the best school.
I think we're seeing a design that's addressing that. So very good.
Absolutely. I think from our perspective, what what is is currently included in it and and with a consideration of of the additional items and features that have been talked about in the community, this would indeed be a pretty amazing school for Auburn. So, and and we like to think of it as, it not only provides great educational resources, but it really is a community asset and community resource as well. So, so with that, where we are with with the schedule, this, this, I think we've shared the schedule with you folks before. But again, we don't expect you to be, see any of those words up there. But we're about in the, in the middle of the cycle. And the the important part we have to get now is for the state and and the building committee to all be on the same page in terms of this is what we believe we really want in a school. The state will agree to the funding, the cost of what that school's going to be. So the 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 design of it and the cost of it have to come into alignment. And that is that concept design. And and so that is the next formal approval, that concept design that we that we need to have. Leading up to that, we also have, we'll have a straw poll asking the community if they support the concept design as well. And that all leads up to the referendum. And I think we have kind of maybe an outline of dates. But the next big, big item is the referendum, which we're, we're trying hard to get.
He doesn't like that slide.
Ah ha. Let's do it again. We had trouble with this slide last, last night, too, at the building committee. But the, so the idea is that we're, we're working really hard to get a June referendum for the, for the public vote on the project. But as we've also said, there's, there's a lot of work with the Department of Education to make sure that they're on board 100% with everything that's being shown. And and it's, it's not a small project. There's a lot of pieces to it, a lot of decisions. And so, and we're meeting with them at a very regular interval. So so we met with with them this past Monday. We met with them a week before that. We have a need, another meeting lined up with them in two weeks. So a lot that's going on. There we go. So in in terms of of thinking about just where we were from this Monday, we had a concept review. Last night, we had a building committee meeting. And then tonight, we're, we're with, meeting before you folks earlier today. Katie and our civil engineer met with the planning department and had a good discussion about the site plan, the layout, and what might be desired or from the planning department on that. And then, as, as Tom said, and I think others as well, Katie, we invite everyone to come out and learn as much as we can, you can about the project next week. We have a public forum to to update everyone. And then we have continued meetings with the Department of Education, like I said, in in two weeks from last Monday. And then we're gearing up towards a submission to the Department of Education. That submission right now, I think we're targeting for, da-da-da, March 15. And prior to that, we'll have the straw poll. So right now, we're, we're targeting March 12 would be a, a public hearing where we ask everyone to come in, and we give them more in-depth information about the project. And we say, do you support going forward with this? That's not a binding vote, but it's essentially straw polls, getting a, a sense of, is there community support for it? Then we'll present it to the Department of Education. They have a couple of boards, formal board approvals that they have to have. Then they'll give us the green light to actually go to the referendum. And so we're looking for their approval at the state, their state board meeting in April, April 10. And at that point, we hope they give us the green light to go to the public referendum in June. That's our current timeframe. We're working really hard to get there. I think if, if anything, right now, I think it's making the Department of Education have to kind of work really hard to keep pace with us. And and so they're working hard, but there's a, it's just a lot of information. So, and that's, that's kind of where we are with the, with the process. So Bonnie.
There's been a lot of chatter in the community about the cost of sustaining this building. So do you build that into the costs that we're seeing here?
So what we'll do, we develop the project cost, which includes the construction, the initial construction cost. We will estimate what the lifecycle or the annual cost for maintaining the building will be. But that is, the state will, will fund you a school. It won't, it won't fund as part of the construction. It will not fund maintenance of the project moving forward. They'll fund you this initial cost. So the, the good thing is, with new facilities, that all the systems are new. So you don't have all the deferred maintenance and trying to keep up with the maintenance on your old high school, and that the systems that we put in are very durable and efficient. So, so your costs actually might go down your annual maintenance initially.
Okay. Thank you. So just so people have, June is very aggressive. We will know whether we're going to go to the, we have to be at the April State Board
to go to, we have to be at the April state board meeting, and how we get there is school committee approval, city council approval, straw poll vote on our side. Then, on the DOE side is commissioner of education who has just been appointed and hasn't yet been confirmed, but is working, we know, because there's been meetings. So, the commission of education has to approve the project, and the Scott Brown's team has to approve that they feel absolutely 100% comfortable, not just with the square footage, but with the cost, and that all has to be done before March 15th. So, at one point, at some point, the DOE may say, "We're not going to get there," and that will push the referendum to September. We've already talked to the city manager and the mayor about the possibility of being a September referendum, and they understand why, we went over it on Tuesday. Lisa spoke to the city manager, Adam was there, and the mayor to talk about why that is a possibility, so, we, we need to say to that community next week, is we're doing everything we can to get to June, but there may be some things out of our control, so we have to be prepared to go in September. So, we will know more as we go. Next week, it, this will be hard, this is an update for the community, it's not necessarily, can we not have three stories, can we not have this, this is the design, and this is an opportunity to ask, ask questions. This will be a time where, is $25 million something that we believe the local can support? And if not, then where are we going, the building committee's going to have to go back and make adjustments. We did tell city council that $20 million is 92 cents on the mil rate, so, that's what people, you know, have to understand, but we're going to show next Wednesday, what are you getting for your 92 cents? You're getting a, a, a large auditorium, you're getting career technical, you're getting a lot of things, your stadium that we've never had, you know, so, we're going to try to show them for your 92 cents on the mil rate, you're getting a state-of-the-art high school, and that your investment is going to be a return on investment to the community. So, that's part of our job, is we work on PR around this, but we do have a short window, and we want to make sure we're getting to city council, I'm glad to hear they're, they're going to be at the meeting next Wednesday, so they can also continue to hear the information. So, we just want you to make sure we're shooting for June, but we may end up in September, and that's okay.
Is it 92 cents on a thousand, on a $100,000 house, or what?
It adds to the mil rate, so it's per thousand, so it's $92.
Per thousand?
Yep.
Okay.
Per thousand, yes. So, 100, that's, home assessed at $100,000 would be $92.
So, would that take effect the year the high school's built, or when would that...
Uh, when it...
Right now, right now, they're looking at issuing the bonds in the spring of '21, so it would be fall of '21 that...
It would take effect.
Those bond payments would start happening, and so, that's when that mil rate would be.
So, is that when...
But, that date is in flux as, as well, as we try to move toward June, that could change, but right now, that's when it's scheduled.
So, is that when the shovel goes into the ground in 2021?
Hopefully be...
2021?
Perhaps, 2020?
Perhaps.
We say perhaps before all of these dates, but '20 or '21.
And to correct the record, I'm proud to say I have a grandson at Yale.
Duly noted.
So, go ahead.
Question on the referendum, are we voting on the school and the 20 mil, or whatever? The whole thing?
Right.
So, that's a one question?
Well, it may, it may not be a single question, but the, the, and, and that's part of what we'll discuss as we move forward, but the idea is that there'll be a question that approves the school, and, and then, anything extra that we want at that time will have to be posed as either part of that question to support the school, or as separate items.
So, Dan, what, you know how with our school budgets, it will say, "Our school budget is $40 million, the state is paying this amount, and the local commitment is this amount," it's going to be the same thing. The total package is this amount, the state is paying this amount, and locally, you're paying this amount, which is impacting your taxes at this amount. And then, we discuss additional items like perhaps geothermal and the second turf, that could be an option for the community to check or not, to prove or not to prove, but it wouldn't make or break the state of the art.
Who could pass without the extras?
With, with things that we think are extras. An auditorium, we talked a lot about this, if you're going to build a 1,200-seat auditorium, you want to make it, the, the auditorium it can be with its lighting, its catwalk, if you're, if you're, if you're going to build it, you want to build it right. Just like the stadium, you're not going to do a stadium and not have a concession stand, and you're not going to have lights, and you're not going to have the bleachers you need, so, that we feel is a non-negotiable, it has to go into the whole cost. But, geothermal might be an option, and a second turf might be an option, and there may be other items, but that's what we're looking at right now.
When will we know when the actual city part of the money, or we, we won't know until the last minute?
No.
You'll know that in March.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you have to...
So, before they vote, you'll know?
You'll know at city, school committee, you have to approve it.
Right, we're going to approve it.
At school committee, so really...
How we're going forward, yeah.
The first meeting, March, end of February, you'll know that number more, because we have to be definitive when you all vote, and we have to, exactly.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, what are we voting for?
Correct, exactly, yeah.
I think that's a big question that people have, what are we voting for?
Right.
The school, the money, or the...
Yes.
That'll, that'll come out and, and be probably described a little more on Wednesday night, but it basically is, we'll try and break it out so everyone can understand the portion that the state is funding, we hopefully can, can illustrate some of that, is, here's the portion the state would fund, we are hoping to have the community support this, which would be a larger stadium.
Is that the max, the 24, 7, 24?
That's, of the things that we believe.
We don't know, that's, that's our best thinking at this time, but, but we're still fine tuning the numbers. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you look at the 21 million...
Right.
That's, doesn't include the geothermal and the second.
Yes, yeah, I understand that.
So, you might, we may put the 21 million out to the community, and then, the extra three, 30, 3.5 million would be what they would have a choice to fund, to get to the 24, okay? But, the, the number that's volatile is the program space number, because we're working constantly on that variable. The auditorium and the stadium are pretty set in, in what we've been discussing over and over and over again, and we, Peter Creighton made a great point last night, you have to tell the community, "We were at 40 million," okay? We've gone from a 40 million local, now we're at 24.7, I mean, we, we've almost cut that in half where we initially started. So, we're, we're trying really, really hard to get it as low as we can without sacrificing, like Bob, you said, we don't want to skimp when you're putting this much money into something.
Sanford was 100 million, correct?
Correct, and that was five years ago.
Sanford's a smaller community than Auburn.
Right, mhm, so, we, those are things we have to discuss, yeah.
But, you have to remember that the fields, the, the initial fields and all the athletic purposes are funded by the state, but not the extras that go with it.
Right, exactly. So, we'll go over that again next Wednesday, what are you getting for your $92, 92 cents, yeah? We want to make sure the community can see, wow, we're getting a lot for that kind of, that investment.
Yeah.
That's our job, Dan, definitely.
Okay, so, if you, if you get it down to the 185 square feet...
We, we're not sure that, that, that's entirely feasible, because that, that means giving up a lot of academic program spaces that are really, right now, considered part of the essential offerings of the, of the school.
So, the extra 7 million there, where are the items like the football stadium and the auditorium?
Yeah, you're going to have to pull that.
Yep.
That's my, Lisa, I thought, I thought you would just revise it, so, I apologize. Okay.
Okay.
That's what you were trying to communicate to me, and I wasn't getting.
I think, Pat, that's what, was, uh...
Thank you, Lisa.
That contributes to that number that you'd be, that, that was on the next slide, so.
Okay, good.
Yep, that 17 million then fed into, into this slide as well, so.
Nice job.
So, you can see the auditorium...
Yep.
4.9, the stadium's 3.3, then we have that enlarged gym, the climate control interior features, you know, like the community stair, distributive dining, the finishing upgrades, and the additional parking, that's still being negotiated, the parking is being negotiated right now, that, that is not, we have not finalized, agreed upon parking by the state, so you can see we're at 13 million, but then you add in the educational programming of said million, that's what's bumping us up, okay?
Any further questions?
I have a question, not really for you guys, but for Katie. AMS is right now our kitchen, what do we call it, hub kitchen, like, that we put all the food out?
Oh, that we satellite, a central kitchen?
Okay, so, will our central kitchen move to EL, or will it stay at, or do we not know that?
Oh, no, okay, I know what you're saying, is, is EL going to become the central kitchen? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
I highly doubt it because of the number of kids EL serves.
Okay.
Because EL serves 1,000, right?
Right, okay, I just...
So, I think AMS would probably stay, still say the central kitchen...
Okay, somebody had asked me that, and it just came up when you said kitchen, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, the difference for EL will be quality of food, they, I mean, their kitchen is not...
State of the art, right.
Correct. I mean, they do an outstanding job with what they, with the resources they have, they do really well.
I'm not sure how they do it.
Right, but this is built for, you know, 1,000 students, three lunches, I mean, they're going to be, yeah.
Is, is there an estimate on, or a, a goal for local fundraising to bring that number down?
What I've said is, to rely on fundraising to bring that down, I think is probably not wise. What the fundraising will do is, is probably protect the things that we haven't accounted for necessarily. Sanford did a lot of that, is, it can get, it could go towards that depending on how much we raise, but it may go down to incidental things, you know, that we hadn't planned for, that we want to say, oh, you know, one thing we haven't talked about is landscaping, the, $25,000 for landscaping.
All the state will pay for it.
Think about what you pay for landscaping just to buy a tree, okay? So, they only will fund $25,000 in landscaping, so fundraising may pay, play a part in fun, in the landscape, so...
Or a named hardscape.
Right.
Right.
Exactly, so, there, there are things that fundraising, we raised $5 million, we can offset some of that, but we can also do some enhancement thing. Sanford said, you know, lawn mowers, you don't think about, okay, well, now you need cer, so they used a lot for things that would, they would know would need later that perhaps didn't have in the total package here. Just, I just hate to say to the community, "We promise you we'll raise this much money, and then we don't," you know?
Right, but I'm thinking of going out and saying, "Help us build an auditorium by buying these seats," so then, the money goes to the...
Auditorium, right.
Hopefully, yeah.
I think the other sentiment in the community that we should be concerned about is that people think we have a declining student population, and just recently, today, there's a article in the Portland Press Herald about the high schools being empty, and that last letter to the editor, which mocked my term, "Looking for a world-class high school," they also talked about a declining enrollment.
So, and I told you, Bob, the, the response on that, and that gentleman, by the way, he, he often gives editorials in the newspaper, but we did a study on the enrollment, this isn't something we picked a number...
And the state wouldn't fund this if they didn't think we had the enrollment to justify it.
Correct, absolutely, yes. And with all the city's work to bring in more housing with the ag, I, I heard today, the ag zone is, you know, wanting to expand single-family homes in Auburn, we will have an increased enrollment if the ag ordinance goes as it is, we're going to have an increased enrollment due to projects that have been approved, so, you know, the anticipation will be there.
Projects alone that are ongoing right now and about to begin will give you a lot of students.
Right, I, I'm a little more worried about how we're going to address the elementary schools.
That's right, yeah, the elementary to begin with.
And the, and the middle school, frankly.
Right.
And we have issues?
Yes, you're right.
I, ladies, ladies?
Yeah, Olivia.
I'd like to know what you guys think, this is the first time that students really have seen this.
I'm jealous.
You're jealous.
I think it's so nice. I think it has a lot of good features, especially like, since we play field hockey and we have to go to Sherwood Heights, I think that's going to be really nice to have all the fields on campus, I think that's really important.
And locker rooms to walk out back to the fields, because there'll be female locker rooms, male locker rooms, so.
I was surprised when they said the 1,200-seat theater, I was like, that's going in the schools? I was confused. That's awesome.
You know, we can arrange for you to stay, if...
I have siblings, I'll be back and visit.
They can come back, it's going to be about four years.
Just get your teaching degree, you can come back.
That's right.
Bring your, your future children to live in Auburn.
Thank you, girls, sorry to put you on the spot.
Thank you, I think we're, we're good, and I appreciate the update, and there'll be more information for the...
Thank you very much, we recorded seeing everyone at, next week.
It's Wednesday.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
When are we going to have a feelie-touchie?
A school?
The actual, the...
Oh, model. We'll talk about it at our next building committee meeting, Bonnie, see if we can get some students to start constructing a model for it, that'd be a, a student project.
Yeah, the 3D, oh, Eric would love that.
I think you've got to take that 3D imagery, yeah, idea around to...
We, we could probably work something out there, Tom, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Very good. And next, Bonnie, I think, are you in faith up on this?
Yep, we are, we are, we had a finance meeting yesterday, we're 50% of the budget in revenue on it, we're still watching our hotspots, our special ed we're watching, transportation we're watching.
How are we doing on special ed, since you're watching it?
Oh, we, we, you don't want to know.
Well, no, it's, yeah, it's 180, 189,000 right now? Yes.
Well, we're, we're projecting out that if, at our current out-of-district enrollment, if all of the kids went every day, we'd be 400,000 to 500,000 over in that line, of course, they don't go, all go every day, so the low end of that would be between 100,000 and 200,000 over, and I'm very confident that we can make that up with some savings on salaries and benefits due to the change in staff, what we budgeted versus where it actually came in.
Well, we're getting ready to go out to a traditional bid for Park Avenue, for the two extra rooms that we're going to add to it, so we're, we're looking at a traditional bid and not a construction management bid on it. We're, SOS has become our program only, we have no tuition students coming to SOS right now on it, so, whatever numbers you see there reflect, there's no revenue on it, so. Is that because of lack of space, or? No, it's just because...
Well, it's not, it, it, it isn't, it wasn't built to have other students, it's built for our students, but we've had Lewiston students participating in it, so it all depends if they're, because RETC students, sometimes Lewiston says, "Well, can they stay and participate in your SOS program?" And so, we have put that as revenue possibilities, and sometimes, we've, we've made out with revenue, and sometimes we haven't, this year, we have not, which is unusual, but it's, it has something, we're filling our slots, so, that's most important, is we're paying for slots, we want to make sure they're filled.
But, as we anticipate special education and bringing back some of the students, it would behoove us to take out-of-district students here...
Right.
So, we can have a revenue source. And we tried, and it's not working this year, but SOS is going to the new high school, so, that's a, that's a good thing for us. We also are doing E...
E-rate telecommunications, can't talk.
It's late, we're doing E-rate for our telecommunication, we did this last year, it's 80 cents on the dollar that we receive, right?
In funding, from federal funding, we receive 80% on any infrastructure upgrades. We did a big wireless project last year, and we're looking to do another one this coming summer, again with 80% funding.
That's great.
So, anytime we can look at that, we try to take advantage of it.
We also have a situation with our buses, and our buses need to be replaced, many of them do, and we might have a good deal on getting... of them do, and we might have a good deal on getting two more buses.
Yeah, so another eighty percent funding opportunity came along, there's a VW settlement fund that the state of Maine is administering, and we applied, and based on the age of some of our buses and the fact that we were doing propane, we were, received two approvals recently on that, so we'll be able to purchase two buses for twenty percent cost. And we've also been approved by the state for three buses next year, and so we'll have to talk about what that looks like at budget time, because as we know, they pay for it, but the funding comes in the year after, so.
And last but least, the, the school department is working on the budget for this coming year on it. On Monday, all the schools have to have their budgets built and into central office to review, and Shelley's going, oh my god, no. So all the, all the.
He's on top of it.
All the budgets have to be brought in so that the superintendent and her, her administration staff can work on it. So we are looking at our budget already, and we're going to try really hard to hold it to a zero percent mill rate, an increase, a zero increase.
So Monday's a holiday, so do they have till Tuesday?
No, they have until Monday.
They have till the end of the day.
Sorry, Shelley tried.
They have till the end of the day, so if they.
They had, they had some snow days, you know, a couple of weeks.
And they may have another one on Friday.
If they want to be working on it on the holiday, they can, but hopefully it'll be done before.
So that's what we're doing in finance, where things are, are moving right along.
Any questions?
Can I just make comment about the zero mil, the zero percent to the mill rate? I just want to remind those that last year, we came in zero.
Mm-hmm.
I think we were less than zero, I think we, where, where did we end up? Adam, you and I talked about that.
It was zero.
It was zero, so it would be two years in a row that there would not be an increase to the mill rate due to education if that held. So I just want us to remember that last year, if your, if your taxes went up, it was not due to.
Education.
The school department.
And actually, we did help the city side.
And we helped the city side in doing that, mm-hmm.
Did, that was appreciated.
We used, we used additional fund balance that we didn't want to use in order to help that, so, just to remember that, this would not be the, I know the mayor has said that, but I just want to remember that this would be two years in a row at zero.
Right, and I can honestly say that every time we go over and over and over the budget, we are all fiscally responsible with the choices we bring forth to city council, and none of us make any request, or teachers, principals, departments make requests that are irrational, they're, they are absolute needs for our students and for our teachers.
We also have to remember that we're in, we're going to begin negotiations with the largest union that we have in our, in our system, the teachers' union on it, so, you know, there are people that have to pay their bills to, so we, just by negotiating, we probably won't be able to hold a zero budget.
But that negotiation will not be done by this budget yet, correct?
It might be.
Might be?
Mm-hmm. Well, you still have to have in your budget, you have to.
Anticipate.
Yes, you have to negotiate fairly, so you have to account for the possibility of increases.
And we're, we're heavily dependent on personnel in the school department, so a major portion of, more than significant, a portion of our budget is made up of salaries and benefits, so as, as contractual obligations are met, our budget goes up. If we do not get an increase annually to the school department funding, then that impacts maintenance, you know, support, programs, salaries, or positions, that, that we are placed in a position of distress, basically, because you cannot meet your contractual obligations. And the only place we've got to go is we've got to cut something in order to balance the budget. We are not able to raise our own funds, we can't say, gee, oh yeah, we'll just, we'll just get some more funds. We are dependent on the citizens to approve a budget that meets the needs of this community's to educate our children, and that doesn't happen without an increase annually to do it well. And so we are requesting that the citizens understand that, we try and explain it as best we can, we're doing the very best we can with the dollars we are provided, and we, we hope that the citizens understand that. If they do have any questions, we're anxious to answer them.
And we must remember that this is a budget, an operating budget for us for the coming year on it, this is not tied to the new school.
That's correct, those are two different, two different.
Two different things.
Two different things altogether.
Any further questions for the finance report? I'd entertain a motion to approve the finance report as just read.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Next would be policy, Michelle, lead us through.
So, our vision and mission statement for the school is actually articulated in the policy manual guiding our work, and so tonight you have, will be a first read for the policy AD, which is the Auburn School Department Mission and Vision to 2030. You're well familiar with this document, you had input, it's been well-vetted in its development by stakeholders, and so, yeah, tonight we're, we're looking to, to approve in a first reading. Is there any questions?
So there's been no changes since the last time we saw it?
Last time we read it, and it's a consolidation and a, and a little more concise and thing, so I think we're all, we're, I think all the stakeholders have been very pleased with, with what the result has been, so I'd entertain a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Very good, thank you. And is that the only policy we're doing tonight? Oh, we're not doing the?
We bring, we went to subcommittee on those, so now those will come in the next packet, yeah.
Very well. Subcommittee, or committee reports, we've had the finance, Alfredo, have you got anything that's happened at city council pertaining to schools that we should be updated on?
Oh yeah, we're just trying to keep, keep a fast pace as well, it's really crazy, every, every night there's like, you know, meetings converging at the same time. I'm just going to briefly just do an overview, we have, if the public is interested in looking at all of the open bids that we have at the city right now, it has been submitted to the, what is it called, the, the Auburn's, Auburn's.
Corporations.
No, the, the Auburn site that you can go to to find out what's going, are you, do you get mailings from, from Auburn, like announcements on?
Oh, the link, I, the pushing out, now I can't think.
Anyway, it's that way, but if, if you're interested in doing that, just look at the city, Auburn City to see what is, is open for, for bids. We have a lot of tax-acquired properties that we are trying to, that will be under sealed bid, so if anybody's really interested in looking at property, and I would entertain also the fact that if there are properties that ever come, when, if, if and when schools are interested, the schools would be interested in looking at properties for whatever, I think that would be a good idea. The Auburn Public Works Storage, they're going to build another storage at Grace Line, there will be Fifth Street Reconstruction Project going on, so that'll impact, you know, your travel, Settle Line striping, crosswalk, arrow markings, and public safety radio system, so those are the open bids that are, are ongoing. Legislatively, there are some things that do impact all of us as far as families and children, but the, there are hundreds and hundreds of bills that, proposed bills that are going to be worked on or being proposed, you can't do them all, but the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee has recommended ten of them. If you want to see what those are, you can find them, call the manager's office at three 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 six six zero one, and you can get a sheet of those, the, the printout of that, but there are ten of them, revenue sharing, local option, sales tax, property tax relief for seniors, adult-use marijuana tax revenue, homestead exemption, which would increase from sixty-two point five percent to higher if that is, is passed, county inmate healthcare costs, and that really, that drains the city because you have to pay for their medicine, I mean, and right now we'd like to try to find a loophole so that we don't have to do that. Opioids, public transit, LA, LA nine-on-one system, and small cell network for fiber optics where there would be some savings if communities would go with that. So there are ten items, and the language is there, so if anyone is interested, please call the manager's office for, and they will send you something via, I'm sure, via email or mailing. We had a workshop, two workshops, Monday, one was to view the Norway Savings Bank Arena, and with its new overseen by the director, Mark Goslin, and he's the director for recreation and tourism, and a lot of students and families are really benefiting from this, and I think the young lady was talking about hockey, and, you know, all of the hockey teams are there, plus we have hockey teams from all over the place, so he has done an outstanding job in reaching out and getting people to come and use that arena. We don't have the figures yet, but we're doing very, very well, and I'm hoping that we can start seeing some positive results in terms of financials.
I, I had heard that it's filled from the wee hours of the morning to ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night.
Exactly.
And there's no curling, it would be nice if we had a curling team, really, seriously.
I know, I know, that would, well, we could fit it in, I mean, if anybody has some ideas and would like to have it, he is open to anything.
Well, you can take it back.
I will.
And the other problem is, the other situation is that, my understanding is that when the ice is out of the large arena, the large ice is out.
The large sheet.
The large sheet is out, that, and that's in the summertime usually, that he hopes to be able to have concerts in, in different venues up there. Now, I know that they can seat eleven hundred people without going to the floor, okay? So if you go to the floor, that's more people, and my concern is that we're going out to bid, and I know I've discussed this with the building committee, my concern is that we want a twelve-hundred-seat auditorium, and I know that Adam and I would like to see Bob Dylan in a comfortable situation and not like we saw him the last time at the Coliseum on it, but seriously, the deal is that we need to be respectful of what we're trying to do in setting up a twelve-hundred-seat auditorium, just my.
Right, I know, and I certainly support that twelve-hundred-seat auditorium, I think that we need to be involving the public, offerings, having an opportunity to raise monies, and it needs to be an open to the public.
That's, that's not the issue, the issue is the competitiveness of, of the community on it, we need to be sure that we get first dibs on what's happening.
Yeah, I don't think you'll want to have RV shows in a new auditorium.
No, I'm not talking RV shows, but I'm talking concerts, you know, we can still have concerts in our facility too, so I want to be sure that we get first dibs on what's happening and not the city. It's an ice arena, and I know they need to be sustained, but, but, and I'm for the ice arena.
And the focus, the focus is, is sports tourism, so keep that in mind, so that's what we're looking for.
Right, and not concerts, so just remember that.
I'll bring that back, bring that back. And then the, the other workshop was on the Auburn Senior Community Center, we were to review the kitchen plans and possible expansion, and that expansion would be covered by funds that are already there, and so we have another meeting, there's another meeting that's being called for that next week, but it's in conflict with, you know, the, the ELHS meeting, so I'm trying to.
Have you got another meeting that's in conflict with such and such?
Well, yeah, well, it's been called and I've asked to have it reconsidered and put it another time because of that time squeeze, because of the monies that are available for that, if not, we will, we would lose it, so, yeah, so there's growth and quality meetings, for those of you who are on those subcommittees for the strategic planning, January seventeenth at six o'clock, and the other one for growth and quality is January thirty-first at six o'clock here at Auburn Hall. The Auburn Middle School, I only do sports for Auburn Middle School because my grandson is a skier, but January nineteenth and January twenty-first, those ski meets will be, the January nineteenth would be at Titcom at nine AM, and on the twenty-first, it would be at Black Mountain at six-thirty. We have a, an ag, an ag zone meeting again on the twenty-second, that's next week, at five-thirty, and the council meeting at the twenty-eighth is the next meeting for the council, and again, the Auburn ski team, Auburn Middle School ski team will be at Lost Valley, so everybody can go to that, that's February second at nine o'clock. So WAD four needs a representative for school committee, so I'm putting that out there.
Time to have a gentleman right here, put his papers in.
WAD four, you did? Woo-hoo!
Yeah.
Good, I'm going to talk to you after.
Yeah.
Going to get to meet you, see who you are.
Very good, thank you, Alfredo. Yes, Bonnie?
With your ski information from the middle school, it's really good, and it would be nice if you could feed it to these little girls over here, so that they would have some information.
Young women.
Young ladies, yeah.
Young ladies.
All they have to do is look at the, look at the schedule, you know, so, because there are a lot of sports going on, so you could do that for all the sports, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Dan, you have an appeals transmission?
You've been, you're busy, Alfredo.
I am.
I don't think we have, I missed the last one, which was a little while ago, but.
Very good, and we've had an update on the new EL, and negotiations have not begun yet, so we'll be planning for that next week. Our next meetings are February sixth, and we will have a workshop at six, followed by a meeting on the twenty-seventh of February, and a workshop most likely on, at six, and we will be beginning the budget.
Yes, what I'm going to do is update a work, a calendar for you and probably mail it out to you before our next meeting, because that six o'clock workshop on the sixth is going to be starting to talk about your budget goals, reviewing your school committee goals, so doing some goal check-in, planning for the budget, and, you know, so we need to start that, and then we'll be on the twenty-seventh doing more, so.
Where is this meeting next Wednesday?
Edward Little High School.
The forum, public forum on the new EL.
The forum, six o'clock.
Six o'clock at Edward Little.
There's a workshop on the, on the February sixth.
It is a workshop, it will not be an exact session.
It will not be, yeah.
Workshop.
It will be in the gymnasium, yes.
So when we have the meeting here to start the budget, are we sticky night?
We might be. I know it's your favorite.
Can we do snacks?
I like sticky notes.
Do snacks.
Do you want snacks?
Stickies and snacks.
All right, anything else people have needs?
We have a need for adjournment, I'll entertain a motion.
Do we want chips?
Second, all those in favor, declare a adjourn, thank you very much. Declare us adjourned, thank you very much.